So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Secretary's office.
Good afternoon. For the Secretary's office, we have tribal council minutes for April 2nd, April 7th, April 28th, April 29th, and April 30th, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Puyer, second by Councilman Rosales. Call for the vote.
Anna Halverson?
Yes.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman?
Yes.
Sonya Little Hawk Weston? Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
David Puyer?
Yes.
Julianne Spotted Bear? Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
Beef Randall?
Yes.
James Cross? Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Jackie Sears?
Uh huh.
Sixteen yes, two not voting. Motion carried.
Okay, and we have Executive Committee minutes for April 4th, April 10th, April 2024, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Puyer, second by Councilman Lunderman. Secretary, call for the vote.
Anna Halverson?
Yes.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman?
Yes.
Sonya Little Hawk Weston? Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
David Puyer?
Yes.
Julianne Spotted Bear? Lyle Weston? Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
Beef Randall?
Yes.
James Cross? Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Jackie Sears?
Uh huh.
Ten yes, two not voting. Motion. Or sixteen yes, two not voting. Motion carried.
That's it for Secretary's office. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving right along to, uh, we'll move on to our next agenda item, Comptroller's report. And I'll turn it over to Comptroller.
Good afternoon, Tribal Council. Um, thanks for letting me be here to present my report to you every month. Personally, I feel this, by me providing a report to Tribal Council, it informs the Tribal Council of what we are addressing on a financial matter that you should be well aware of on a monthly basis. Due to the fact that the tribe's financial system, contracts, grants, the tribe has so much contracts and grants. And each one of those contracts and grants has to be audited. The auditors take the major programs over a certain amount of money. And they, basically, they consider those major programs, those are the documents that the auditors provide to basically me to pull the documents, get them back to them, so they could do the testing on them. So right now, what we're doing is, with our 2021 audit as of last Friday, our pre-audit firm Baker Tilly has submitted our trial balance along with our CFOs. Our CFOs is, that is our Schedule of Expenditures for Federal Awards. They go through our accounting records compared to the contract and grants. Right off the top of my head, I, I can't determine how much programs we have. I just want to let you know that the tribe is a huge organization. And it takes a huge effort on a daily basis to process vouchers, checks, and get them out the door to the programs. When that process happens, we have to basically look at those documents to make sure all the required, I'm going to say requisitions, purchase orders, whatever else has to be on there. If it's a contract or whatever, construction contract, we have to make sure that our procurement process is followed. Those are the documents that the auditor will definitely pull and test, so we have to make sure those documents are there. There's many times where some of the programs will get upset because I asked for additional documentation. But that's to prevent any additional findings that might be in our audit. What we're doing now, what I'm focusing on, is getting these documents, making sure our financials are in order, so we do not receive a lot of findings in our 2021 audit. As you've seen, our 20 audit, 2020 only had three findings. That was, that was huge. That was great. Based on the CARESAC funding we received. Right now, in our 2021 audit, which is taking the most of our time, is the ARPA funding. They are, send me lists, a lot of ARPA documents that they want me to pull, send back. I was just letting the treasurer know this morning, when you walk into my office, under the floor by my desk, you're going to see piles and piles of documents. Those are documents that was pulled and sent to the auditors. So first, I feel that we pretty much got a majority of the documents they requested. Might, uh, couldn't find a couple of them. But I let the staff know that's unacceptable to me. I sent them over to Property Supply to our storage unit, made them pull boxes out and look for checks, our check copies, which they did find. I gotta give them kudos too. They have done a great job in pulling documents in a very timely manner. I could give them a big list in the morning that I need. By the afternoon, they have the documents on my desk, ready for me to send back to the auditors, which is really, really great. So just, uh, wanted to give you that little, I guess, verbal report there. But my report itself is, and this is kind of touching, following up on my last, my April report. So I'm just going to read it for you. Audits, the departments within the Financial Accounting Office are engaged with the pre-audit firm to complete the 2021 audit. It expect, it is expected to be submitted to the Federal Clearing House by May 30th, 2025. Pending, there are no unforeseen issues. I just mentioned the unforeseen issues. We also, we are also reconciling the accounting records and compiling financial documents for the 22 audits. So with 21 still going on, we are actually working on 22, getting those documents ready. We are hopeful to have the 2022 audit completed prior to the anticipated deadline date of December 31st, 2025. With the completion and submission of the 22 audit, the federal, to the Federal Clearing House, the tribe will no longer have delinquent audits. However, we won't have delinquent audits three years. That's what's hurting the tribe right now. We have three years of delinquent audits. That's, um, that's where we're at right now. That's why we're trying to get these cleared up. However, the tribe must continue to work on completing the 2023 and 2024 audits as the 2025 audit is due to the Federal Clearing House by September 30th, 2026. So what, the tribe is on a calendar year, basically, January through December. With that in mind, uh, federal requirements requires us to submit the report, audit report, by September 30th of the following year. So if we was online, if we was up to date, that gives the tribe nine months to submit an audit to the clearing house, which is sufficient time. When we was all, I guess, updated with our audits back in the good old days, that's, that's the schedule we was following. There is a few things that prevented us from being on schedule all the time. One, I hate blaming it, is the, the COVID period. Second thing is the auditor for 2020, 2020, as y'all know, quit on the tribe in the middle of the 2020 audit. That really hurt the tribe. It was very difficult to go out and find an auditor or a pre-audit firm to pick this up and complete without no previous records. They had, I mean, it was very difficult to even get a 2020 audit in, but it's in clearinghouse. So, um, those are the main two things that really hurt the tribe. But keep in mind, these audits, which is tribe's organization is so huge, it takes a lot of time to get the documents together, get it in audit forms, so we could get the audit. So moving on, the 2021 and 22 pre-aud, pre-audit work is ongoing and will continue until the auditors are completed with the audit and submit the audit to the Federal Clearing House. The cash reconciliations by the tribe and the pre-audit firm delayed the pre-audit preparations for the auditors. However, the financial documents required are constantly being uploaded to the auditors to complete the 2021 audit. The 2021 audit would not be submitted by May 30th, 2025. I'm not going to throw a date out there. I threw so much dates out there in the past, I missed all those dates. But we are a lot closer now of, to submit it. Basically, I'm going to project two months before we get it in. But again, we don't want to rush the audit. We don't want to have any, a lot of findings out there. Historically, whenever the tribe was on high risk back in year 2000, the first audit that we did, and we was delinquent back then also, that's when I volunteered for the comptroller position on a temporary basis. I'm still here, but hey. That first audit we did back then, the tribe had like thirty-some findings, which was terrible. But it didn't help the tribe, but we did get the audits in. Eventually, we got to a point where we have no findings because we had time to get our books together, our documents, and get them to the auditors in a timely manner. So, um, so on this, my report, I have passed the Tribe's 2020 Corrective Action Plan and proposed completion date related to the 2020 audit findings. That's on page three. If you go to page three, Ogaasue Tribe 2020 Audit Findings. This was in our audit. The first, are we there? Did we get there? So the first finding we had, 2020 001, was account reconciliations. This is what I mentioned that delayed, that's delaying us now. We had to get all of our accounts reconciliation. The biggest issue, it's, it's the third page, it's this one right here. It has, no. So it's the cover page, page two, then it's right after that. It should be right after that. It has corrective action plan on it. So with that, we submitted our corrective action plan. The tribe will develop a month and year-end process to ensure timely reconciliations in view of all general ledger accounts to ensure financial statements amounts are properly stated. The tribe has contracted with the consultant firm to assist with establishing a monthly closeout process, reconciliation of general ledgers, and is provide training to the tribe's finance staff. These processes have not been established, anticipating establishment of such processes in 2025. That's due to the pre-audit firm is currently engaged in our audit, our pre-audit. Once we get those numbers, all that completed, then the training is going to come in. That is in their contract. So, um, so that training will happen. Proposed completion date, Tribe, Tribal Management has established a deadline for this to be completed by December 31st, 2025. The second finding was a uniform audit submission. This is due to a delinquent audit. And the Tribe's corrective action plan, I'm going to read this. The tribe unfortunately accidentally delinquent in its annual audit report as a result of a COVID-19 pandemic emergency, when throughout the year, the tribe had been substantially closed to normal operations. In addition, there was some turnover in the outsourced resources which were engaged to assist with year-end closing and reconciliation processes. Upon reopening of the government, the tribe sought new consultation resources for fiscal year-end closing and audit preparation. Contracts have been secured for those services, and the tribe will work diligently to catch up delinquent audits and return to normal business annual anticipated timely filing of its audit. Next page is proposed completion date. Tribal Management has conservatively estimated that annually at least two audits can be prepared for for and completed. All reasonable efforts will be made to exceed the estimated where possible. Following this time, the tribe should be able to file its 1231, 23, 26 audit within nine months following fiscal year as required by the Uniform Guidance. So, you know, I know we did letters request, I mean, and with me, it was pressure from a few funding agencies that wanted dates on some letters. And I know one was submitted on our present letterhead. We knew the December 31st, 2024 audit was, we will read that, but it was really iffy on the May one, but the, was it the broadband or whatever at that time, wanted a date in there. So reluctantly, we put a date in there. So and the next finding is based on, and I mentioned that when we presented it, we couldn't find some documents. So it was, uh, questioned. I can't see how much. So that's why that's there. That's why I told, like I mentioned earlier, I let the records office, records retention office know. It's unacceptable not to find documents, to go kick boxes around, you you find them if you have to go way back to the storage shed, but you find them, which they did. So with that, you know, that's the part on the audit. Oh, right.
Dean, we have a couple of questions. We'll start with Councilman Puyer and then Councilman Kelly.
Good afternoon. Dean, since we're not going to make the, uh, May 30th, did you, or did you say it? When do you think we'll get that in? Month, two weeks? Two months?
We have weekly meetings with our pre-audit and audit firms. And Cora has been attending quite regularly. Past one we had, we were shooting for two months, July. That sounded like a reasonable time for the auditors and the pre-audit and the tribe. Much of the fieldwork, much of the financial statements have been completed. It's just the auditors have to internally do their thing. Their, their compliance stuff. So we're anticipating two months.
So that one that's due December 31st, I guess after this 21, when everything's, I mean, most of the documents should be found by them, so are we going to meet the December 31st deadline of whatever ones are there, are definitely held up too?
No, as I stated earlier, right now, I mean, we are actually doing the financial preparation stuff internally upstairs to get with our pre-audit firm. Visiting with our pre-audit firm, they thought maybe it'd be good for them to come on site sometime in June or July for our 22 audit. To make sure we don't have this type of delay, but the staff is right now also doing the 2022 account reconciliations. I, I need to throw this out there. What really delayed, they delayed us in 2021 with our account reconciliations is the previous individual we had up there. He did the drawdown for us. We did not have access to our own system. He's no longer there, hasn't been there. So when the staff had to go and start entering this revenue into our accounting system, it was very difficult because we had to go back and reconcile it back to the grant award, assign the fund number. And we, the documents just weren't there. It was not shared with our FAO staff, which was very upsetting. We was actually locked out of our own accounting system. I know I let a few old council reps know that at the time, well, basically completely out of the loop back then, but and that also attributed to this, you know, and I know I'm, a lot of time that I, I take the hits for why we delinquent, this and that. But we are trying to bring this tribe back into compliance. We have to. And as a member of the tribe, I will not leave the tribe until we are complete with the current with the audits. Which is going to take a lot of work, but hey, we'll get there. We did it before, and then we'll get there again. Long as our funding agencies keep working with us and allowing us to, you know, receive our grants, get grants, monies, there's a couple of them out there that are not right now, but we're working with them. One is the BIA, one is our special diabetes program. But we're hopefully going to get that one resolved today. So yes, we should not have no delays on our 22 audit.
Are you done?
I, I, I know, I know, I know you and the staff upstairs could get it done, but I just appreciate, you know, all the hard work you guys are doing right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Kelly.
You know, I, I, uh, I actually reviewed this, Dean. I do read this stuff. And, uh, I, I got to ask, you know, the, your page three and four, is that directly from the auditor? Or did you put this together?
Corrective Action Plan?
Yes.
Yes, I did work with our pre-audit CPA firm after the audit came out. Drafted this, we both looked at it, we was both fine with it. There were some changes I definitely made on it because before I had positions responsible, I had the OST comptroller, and I said, I'm not going to be responsible for all that. We got staff that also has to be involved here. So I, I changed the words, and I changed their positions responsible.
Okay, that brings me to another question. Are we strictly talking about the BIA programs on this?
When I get to that part of it, that's one of the programs that have us currently sanctioned with IDC and direct contract support dollars based on our delinquent audits.
So we are sanctioned at level two or three?
They have not awarded us our IDC, our, in our direct contract support dollars as of today. We, and once I get to that part of it, the letter they requested, we did respond to that letter on indirect cost. We have not received a response back that I'm, that I know of right now. But the BIA is the one that currently has us sanctioned with our indirect cost. I think it might be a sanction too.
Okay, stepping back to your, your page two, the suspension of funds. We're, uh, we're talking about the special diabetes program, and, and I did get a call from that director who was a little upset because he was told that he had to lay off all nine of his employees, which I didn't agree with at the time, but I didn't know enough to actually question it, and I haven't spoken with you about it, but it's actually in your report. But, you know, that diabetes program takes care of our youth. And I do know in the past, we have carried programs for a while. You know, this audit information is, is actually not any of the program's fault. So why are they being penalized? You know, it would be your folks' responsibility to address all, all the audit issues. Hence, that's going to bring me to a different question because I also understand the Federal Highway Administration's transportation funding is also suspended. And I'm assuming if the, if they're suspended, I'm, I'm going to tie into a Bureau of Reclamation. Is their funding also suspended? Because that's our water program. That's our mini Wachoni program. So I'd, I'd like to know how many of our programs are actually under suspension at this time, other than the one that's listed and the BIA? Which, you know, I'm going to follow up with another question. You know, we, uh, we have asked you on several occasions to at this point, where do we stand with going electronic? You keep talking about pulling documents and pulling documents and rather than continue to live in an antiquated system, when are we going to go electronic with all this stuff? Because this is really detrimental. You know, at a, at a speed of light, how we could be retrieving them documents in a search rather than having to send a list over to property, over to property, downstairs, over to archives? When are we going to go electronic with this stuff? You know, we've been saying it for quite some time. I, uh, also wanted to know what's actually happened to the 2020 audit. I haven't seen any official clearance of, of that audit in its entirety. Do, do we have that for the record? Or is that still floating around out there? I'm, I'm just throwing some questions out, Dean, based on your report. I have attended one or two meetings with you when it comes to the 638 stuff, self-determination stuff, but I haven't been really, really keeping up as much as I, I possibly should. And I'm understanding that there is a corrective plan for the BIA programs, but where exactly do we sit with that? Sorry for all the questions all at once, Dean. Sorry, it's just rambling coming to me.
Yes, those are good questions, and if I forget to ramble back, excuse me, because I might forget something here. I know I wrote some down. But one of your questions you asked, where are we at with BOR, Rural Water? That's a good question. Two years ago, they came down, did a compliance review on their program. Keep in mind, prior to that, the treasurer at our CPA, our internal accountant person with finance, I, hopefully some remember this, they went there and said, we, we don't want BOR down here with the tribe to help us with our finances. And even myself, I was instructed to no contact with those BOR officials, which I did sit right with me. There were our funding agencies, we need to work together. So those two individuals are not there no more. Once that happened, Cora and I sat down and met with the BOR officials in Rapid City. I think that was prior to or after the compliance review came down. It was, we had ten findings in that compliance review. Keep in mind, the tribe was very close of not receiving the additional infrastructure money, sanctions, drawdown wise. But I need to let this tribal council know. Since we've been working with them, opening that door with them, all 425s have been filed with them. Mostly all findings have been answered. There was a big finding in there that we had to reimburse Rural Water for hazard pay that was not corrected with our internal auditor, which I requested it need to get done. That was corrected. We have one major one that's out there is Financial Management Manual, but they are fine with the tribe. We have bi-weekly Zoom meetings with Mike Addy from BOR and his assistants. And we have another one. Um, and his assistants and the we have another one scheduled for Friday. Right now, we're on the same playing field with them. Um, we're receiving money. We set up uh, different bank accounts for the infrastructure dollars that they requested, which. Cora opened accounts and money's flowing through those uh, infrastructure accounts. The the money is flowing. Um, and as of the last meeting, everybody's seemed to, everybody's on the same page. We're working together, government to government, which needed to happen way back then. But instructed not to make contact with them, which was not right. Second question you had on our records retention and our uh, electronic system. Our records retention office currently. They scan all of our doc financial records into their system into a folder. Contracts folder, they call it by program. The year twenty and twenty one, that was the terrible years when, again, in our corrective action plan. Um, people was in and out, work was really not happening. They fell behind in that area. That's why I mentioned. We had to go get the boxes and get them that way. But for now, yes, they are scanning financial records into the system. The contract folders, um, I can't remember the name of it is, but anyway, yes, um. Our twenty twenty audit. I have it in my uh, my desktop in a folder along with all the other audits, no problem. Uh, sending it to you in its entirety. Um. So yes, whenever I get back to the office, I will definitely email that to you, Dave. Uh, it's the full complete audit. Um, that's where we get these three findings from. What I've seen in the twenty twenty audit, compare it to the twenty nineteen, the tribe disclosed. In my opinion, way more information, financial uh, loans, bonds than previously. So, and I mentioned that to the pre-audit maker till when we got aboard, everything the tribe. It can be disclosed. I don't care what it is, we can go out and find it, land lease, that was a big stopping point for us back then, but we got it all. Um, so. The twenty twenty audit had disclosed, in my opinion, every the tribe's complete financial. Situation. Um. See, I told you I was gonna forget. I actually, I wrote three of them down. I think I answered all three of them.
Okay. Was that your counsel then?
So.
Oh.
So as it sits right now, we're we're not gonna make the deadlines that you proposed, uh, si- starting in December when we sat here. We're gonna probably go in, you you know, the the four twenty fives are killing us, you know, and and you already talked about the indirect cost. Direct contract support cost dollars not coming down. We're only gonna get a percentage base and usually that's what you said eighteen percent, if I remember right, somewhere rounder.
That's a normal eighteen percent.
Yeah, yeah, that's that's normal. Uh. Just no one, what I I I've been reading coming from from Mrs. Hughes at the the DC level and all the proposed cuts that are. Coming across my emails, you know, I gotta read all that stuff also. Are are we prepared? For for, you know, the the detrimental healthcare issues that are gonna be coming down or or we're we're already talking about shutting programs down. We asked if you had a backup plan, a contingency plan? And and is that thing in black and white, you know, because. If if we're only gonna receive a certain percentage of indirect cost money and direct contracts per dollar money. How how impactful is that going to be to the tribe?
Yes. And I do have it in my report to answer your question on the second page on the bottom, suspension of funds. In bold and underline, I note it, based on the suspension of the funds, this is directly impacting the tribe's indirect cost budget. Failures to resolve the suspension of funds will result in the indirect cost budget being decreased. To reflect a shortfall of indirect cost revenue. What we're waiting for is the response from the BIA on the letter we sent it in the packet. On their what their letter requested on the indirect cost. So we responded. Um, so. And I know the last meeting I mentioned that I'm waiting to see what comes out of that before I was talking to Cora earlier. I'm not gonna, if it comes down to it, I'm not gonna sit there and make the recommended decreases to the indirect cost budget. It's salaries fringe based. I'm not gonna sit here by myself and come back to finance, whatever, saying I recommend these positions to be ripped, reduced, are. Uh, vacated until we get started in direct costs to get in. That's a reality. We need to think about that. It's here, I mentioned it before. I mentioned it in my twenty. Two, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five indirect costs. Cover page in the working sessions. I had a full paragraph. That suspensions could happen based on our delinquent audits. And here we are. It's reality. Um, so. We definitely need to. Look at it because I I mentioned, I'm not gonna decrease that indirect cost budget by myself. I'm not gonna be the bad guy who's. You know, um, but we need to look at that.
I'll leave it there, Chairman. Thank you.
Um, I need to throw this in there. Other funding agencies that the tribe has, they're working with us. It's the special diabetes one right now, BIA, like you mentioned, uh, federal highways, we knew that was coming. But I'm gonna say master health, working with their person, I sent them our corrective action plan. There was, we already got funded for FY twenty five anyway, direct and indirect. So, um. We're moving forward with those for uh, EPA. DOJ is the next one that I kind of have my. You know, that's it might be coming for something because they've already been in contact that we had to do a modified IDC rate. We sent back to them last week. So, um, it's surprisingly DOJ is not. Beating us up right now, but it's kind of sitting there, you know, um. So I mean, that's where we're at with what's going on. These are important issues of the tribe. Um, I also want to get into the delinquent BIA SF four twenty five financial reports. That was a big issue last. Last meeting we had. Since we had last last month's report. I want to read it. The financial account office did meet with the BI officials on the completion of the delinquent SF four twenty five financial reports. Based on the meeting, FAO has been submitting completed fi- reconcile financial reports. And remains in communication with BIA to expedite the submission of financial reports. Cora signed a whole folder of four twenty fives this morning when she got back. Um, additionally, FAO has completed a two-day online training provided by the BIA rated to. The required reporting requirements of the BIA ninety-six thirty-eight direct contract support cost, that's the eighteen percent and indirect cost. So, based on the last report I gave, we have been actively. Moving forward, I mean, involved with. Didn't try to get this tribe, I mean, this tribe, our tribe in compliance. At the same time, doing this, doing their daily, trying to stay on top of their daily work, which I have to commend them for. And also putting up with me. Um, so they have been working hard, they're moving forward. We're not sitting there not doing anything. You're anytime you're, any of you is welcome to come to my office. And just hang out and watch it, see how it works. Um, auditing is a huge, huge task. Um, like I said, we don't have no financial, I mean, findings. Um, that's why we're we're taking, I mean, not taking our time, but making sure everything is. Submitted, reconciled. Um, so.
Counselor man, little white man.
Okay, I I don't know if there's questions for Dean or Cora, but is the lack of audits affecting our bonds?
Right now, the ones that hold our bonds, they're asking for our audits. The last one we gave was twenty twenty that held them off. Previously, we gave them uh, un-audited trial balances that that seemed to. I guess they were happy with that for now, but still, audit statements are. They need them, yeah. Um, so. That's basically the report I gave on the auditing and uh, IDC. If we keep turning the page, I'm not done yet. Don't go asleep on me. Uh, we have a page here. That's a response to tribe under President's letterhead. Is a response to the letter from the BIA April eighteenth. Requesting a response by May sixteenth to under BIA's letterhead that looks like this. Um. Yeah, that's, that looks like it. Anyway, on the last paragraph, I mean, it's all deals with direct contract support indirect cost. They wanted a response from the tribe on what we wanted to do. And it's mentioned in the last paragraph on that page. So we we respond at May sixteenth, working with our IDC firm. Who I was in contact with on the phone, drafted this. Showed showed the treasurer, she was okay with it, sent it to the president's office. It was issued back to the BIA on May fourteenth. So in my opinion, we complied with their request of April eighteenth on their letter. Um, so, wait for a response back on that. Um, I did mention to Cora this morning, I might want to go over to BIA and visit with them tomorrow, see where we're at and keep up the communication. Um. So that letter was sent to the tribal on April eighteenth with the support documents, pretty much federal regs. Um. So that's where we are on that response. So we're complying with their responses. Um, the last two pages you're gonna have here, the last three of my report is related to special diabetes. Um, the first one is for their calendar year, January twenty twenty four through. December of twenty twenty four, their funding. Um, on the second page of that, there's remarks. The. Yeah, the word is partially. Grant funded a model of seven hundred forty three, seven hundred forty thousand, a restricted pending the submission of the twenty and twenty-one. And twenty-two, eight thirty-three audit to the federal clearinghouse. This is where Charlie and Christie's coming in with their funding agency. They made contact. They were, she was reviewing at the funding agency, I can't remember her name, and was gonna get back with Charlie and them today. So hopefully, this individual is not as, I guess, tough as the one we that retired. From my understanding, the one that retired didn't want to hear nothing about it, just no, no, no. So. Tomorrow, our regular grant specialist comes back, Sharon Smith, her name. Who's really worked with the tribe great all these years. Hopefully, we could get something resolved at that time. Hopefully, something gets resolved today. So that's your twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. Again. The remarks on the bottom of this page is states. Basically, funds are restricted pending submission of audits.
Question. Councilman Stanislaw.
So Dean, um. We're probably gonna hear the same report month after month after month, going back to why our audits are late and. What you're doing to improve them. But my question to you is what do you need from this council to help along with these audits?
You know, and I thought that myself, you know, um, first of all, I think we, I I I'm sure we have the right people in place, meaning our firms that we contracted with. And we have the knowledgeable staff upstairs. We we can't. We have no room for additional staff. Um, plus, right now, with that indirect cost the way it is, we can't put any more position, we can't fund any more positions. Under indirect cost until we get some money. So. Again, I asked myself the same thing. What can the council do to help us? Um, I know that was asked the last time also, um, I don't, I'm thinking my response might have been the same, but. So. It's just, um, just keep pushing, pushing, pushing daily basis. Um, I've also allowed my staff, if needed. After their daily workloads or whatever, to stay a couple more hours after work to get the four twenty fives in. That was, I'm concentrating on that. Um, I really don't like them working on weekends because that's their time away. They need to be at their families. I don't want to burn them out. So. With your question. I don't know. I mean, I have no room for anybody. Um, it's really hard to find qualified help. I advertised these positions before. I think I re-advertised three times before I finally got to. Qualified individuals, so. But I think right now, we're all on the same page upstairs. We know what direction we need. We know, yeah. Um, the schedule of how to get it done.
Good, good question. Counselor Spatter Bear and then Counselor Man Sears.
Thank you, Chair. Um. So Dean, I think after hearing the questions and the points being made. Uh, I I believe Councilman Kelly made some valid points and some valid suggestions. Most of you all are aware that last week I went to myself and the treasurer, uh, Cora. White Horse went to Washington DC and, you know, I believe, you know, my my efforts to fight. Against the president's skinny um, skinny budget. Um, at that time, were. Were efforts to fight against the skinny budget and his reduction in the Bureau of Invest, uh, the Bureau of Indian Affairs. And um, what he was, what his thoughts were in taking away funding from the BIA, from the Bureau of Indian Affairs, the um. Public safety and Bureau of Indian uh, of. Education. And several other areas, but those three topics are areas that I spoke on and Cora spoke on. And I hate to think that the efforts for that whole week, meeting with a lot of the delegation there are fruitless. After hearing what I'm hearing now, um, and you spoke about reality and you spoke about where we're at right now. You know. One of the areas that that they're considering are taking away six hundred and seventeen million dollars from the Bureau of Indian Affairs programs. And it states, the budget focuses on core programs for tribal communities. The budget eliminates the Indian guaranteed loan program for tribal businesses development because it's. It is duplicative of services, other programs across federal governments that offer loans to small businesses. And which tribal businesses are eligible and eligible for and receive. The budget also terminates the Indian law consolidation program, which has received bipartisan criticism. For being ineffective. In addition, the budget also reduces funding for programs that directly fund tribal operations. Such as roads, house, housing and social services in order to focus on core priorities for tribal communities such as law enforcement. The budget streamlines the tribal law enforcement program to reduce funding, uh, correction, but it also takes away from the public safety. So in saying that. And then we're also, uh, you mentioned that we are sanctioned too with the BIA. And so when we talk about. Well, I don't want to make a decision on on what we're gonna have to do, but the reality is that you are gonna have to make a decision. Because this is where we're at. And I feel like. The decision shouldn't be put on on the council because as the comptroller, that is your decision to make. And. We're, now we're at a place where there are programs that are not receiving funding. Our people are, our people are being laid off. So how are they gonna provide for their families? And if it's a matter of cutting, cutting pay versus laying someone off. Maybe that's a direction that we need to go. I don't, I don't know what the direction is, but I I believe that a precedence has been set and a priority should be made. And so rather than waiting, what the BIA says, that we need to go knocking on. And so rather than waiting, what the BIA says, that we need to go knocking on those doors. And I'm not a person that likes to wait, and that's why I felt that it was. An initiative that I needed to take to go to Washington DC last week. And I believe that where there's a plan for us to go back again to continue to fight against the skinny budget. Because during the appropriations hearing, our own state senator. Didn't make one iota mention to fight against the cutting, the the cutting of this this funding. And that was really disheartening to to sit there and and witness. That there was no fight for the cut against this budget from our own state senator. So I encourage my colleagues to go up there and fight and. Fill those offices and those spaces to fight against this budget. But I think now a priority needs to happen that. We do what we have to do with the BIA and ensuring that these audits are done so that we are not having to lay off anybody else. With what's going on right now. So what we have to, whatever we have to do, we have to make this a priority in finance. And have this discussion Thursday. I think that needs to happen.
Uh, just FYI, I have an appointment on Thursday. I let Cora know that not could be available Thursday, but I like your comment there. Yes, I could definitely, you know, do a modification to the indirect cost budget, bring it to finance. And then. Go through it then, you know, based on. What I see, you know, um, and then we could. Then I could get beat up in finance of what I'm trying to decrease, but. At the same time, I hear exactly what you're saying, and I've said this for years. Washington DC, not one or two should attend. The Ogallalas should attend with. A good delegation to go in there and say, hey. We're here. You need to listen to us as a delegation, not one or two. Ten, whatever, you know, um, that's what needs to happen. I've been saying that for years. Uh, because Norman asked me to just wago. My monthly reports. I don't want to come back next month with the same report, you know, I want to. Have. Different things in there. I mean, what else is is gonna happen this month? Um, it's gonna still be the audits and all that stuff. I hope not, but hopefully we we get some. Some positive. News from our funders. Um, but yes, I have no problem sitting down and preparing a draft IDC budget. Decreasing it and bringing it to finance, but like I said, I'm gonna be unavailable Thursday. Um, so, but I I definitely will do that.
Okay. Councilwoman Little Hawk Weston or Councilwoman Sears and then. Little Hawk Weston.
Yeah, Dean, I did have a a question on the. Four twenty-fives and the narratives, but I guess um. The requirement for the program directors, they were supposed to do narratives. Are those being caught up and? Hand it in?
When I've been seeing in my emails, uh, when they CC the chief of staff. Um, I mean, when they send them to him, I'm also getting CC'd on the narratives from him. So yes, I've seen some, we submit it.
Okay, because I think that was one of the uh concerns from BIA was the four twenty-fives and those narratives. And the letter dated April eighteenth, twenty twenty-five from the Department of Interior. It's, I can't even read it, so I don't even know. It's just a blank page. I don't know what it says, but I do know that when you guys did have the meeting. With BIA that they were gonna give a letter, a letter was forthcoming. Is that this letter or is there one coming?
This one's dated April eighteenth. When I was doing my report yesterday. I was going through, I ran across this one that I had, I I just overlooked. It was one from May eighth. Kind of set some timetables and it's in your packet. Um, I really didn't get a chance to really review it, but.
Yeah, I think, you know, just based on that. I think the the date of May thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, that. You know, the audit was gonna be submitted. Like, you know, was agreed upon. What happens? And you're saying that it's gonna be pushed to July. Couple months out, but what happens with the indirect cost because it was also discussed. That um, they were gonna release a percentage of indirect cost. And contract support dollars? Is that still gonna happen?
That was based on the letter that we had to submit our request by. May sixteenth. Like I mentioned earlier. Just to open a line of communication again, I most likely will go over to the BIA visit with Valentina tomorrow, see where we're at.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause that's kind of concerning. If you guys agreed upon that date, then what if?
Um, this May thirtieth date was agreed on way back in. December, I think we put it on the president's letterhead. Due to the fact that the broadband. Through Jennifer Hughes requested some dates on our audits. And like I mentioned earlier, I was very reluctant to even include. Dates because of all the dates that. I missed.
Yeah.
So I didn't even want to mess with dates. So um, that's, so that's my plan.
So how soon do you think that we'll hear back to if they agree with it and?
Um, hopefully, if she's available tomorrow, I'll have a sit down with her. We'll.
So maybe we'll hear something by finance Thursday?
I'm not gonna be here.
Oh, you're not?
Yeah.
Uh, Councilwoman, we could probably find that out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Dean.
Uh, Councilwoman Little Hawk Weston. Also, let me rec- recognize Councilman Goldsberry at two sixteen.
Thank you, uh, President, you know, um. You know, I think that what my colleague is asking, I was kind of concerned about the same thing, Dean. Um, you know, I'm hoping that we can get those done by the end of the month. I think the the four twenty-fives. And the delinquent. The, I meant the report, the narratives from the programs. And I'm really hoping that our chief of staff is on top of that part of it. By the making sure that the programs are getting the narratives done and submit it. Uh, you know, that's kind of a concerning. That uh was given to us at the finance committee. That's why I'm just, I was looking at your report and I know you kind of went over some things here. But I'm just really concerned about that part because I really don't want to see some more programs. Get uh, you know, funding suspended or anything. I was just writing down all the programs that you were mentioning earlier. You know, that was quite a, there's kind of. Kind of getting concerning now, you know, as uh, you know, just sitting here listening to your report, but um. You know, uh, when you're now, you're talking about DOJ. You know, DOJ was down here last week. And I was kind of concerned because um, some of us, I think, um. I asked, you know, our president. And uh, the chair of our Law and Order Committee, if they were at that meeting, because they were at the uh courthouse. Peacekeeping room meeting with our uh programs and their needs, I guess. But on top of that, we have all these concerns here. And we're requesting for more funds and we're requesting for all of this. I I really kind of felt, um. You know, that was, don't know really. Kind of the 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 part that DOJ was was doing by coming down and just meeting with our uh programs. You know, at the DOJ. Meeting with them at the peacekeeping room, you know, I I really felt that uh, we're still in this kind of a. Situation, Dean, so I was just kind of surprised that that was going on. But at the same time, uh, I'm really hoping the reporting part is getting done. The other part of it, you mentioned that a delegation you always felt should go, and I know that it might be third weekend uh. June that we will be going to uh DC and I think uh. The ma- majority of us council that uh did talk say we would like to go, all go to DC. And I think Dee Cora kind of shook her head when we, when it was told to her that there is gonna be a delegation going to DC. I think, you know, along with the other tribes, our sister tribes, you know, we have Rosebud, we have Shine River. We also have Sanding Rock and others that will be up there, so. Uh, we did talk that we would like to do the same thing, you know, we need to go as a delegation. We need to fight. For what? We feel. You know, our tribe. You know, through our treaties are owed to us as a tribe. And we need to always stand on that. So, you know, I think a lot of us um are fortunate to have gone to DC before, so we do know. What we need to do when we get there. So I just want to say that today, and I also want to say, um, uh. Of course, we are. In a Republican uh state. And so that is why we're where we're at today, and now things are getting harder. We see it. You know, so I really want to say that I'm hoping that you're keeping up on your timelines. Because you're giving us timelines, so I'm hoping you stay on top of it. Because I really don't want us to get affected by it, but I do want to say, Dean, that um. We should sit down. Through finance committee with you and go over some of the things that uh might affect a tribe. And that we can sit down and work together on it. To uh, so that you don't be the only one saying, well, I had to do this and I had to do that. You know, I think you'll have uh council's um. Input into it too. Thank you.
I won't say that. I'll say Sonia made me do it. So yes, all this is very concerning. I was listening to you. And in my report, you know, it wouldn't be in my report, my first paragraph, the comptroller's report. To the Ogallawas who travel council contains information related to the important matters. The comptroller's office is currently addressing. So yes, I mean, we all know what's there. We are addressing it. Uh, we shouldn't be here. Um, addressing it if it was taken care of. Back then, but. Um, I knew it was gonna eventually come and hit us, and that's why I backed in. I said, I gotta take this. I gotta roll with it. And, yep, so.
Okay. Any questions, any other questions? Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Councilman Randall.
Yeah, it's uh. It's kind of in line of what Sonia was trying to is is saying, and I was, um. I'm, you can send a delegation up there, but if we don't have anything to go with on dates and, you know, so I would appreciate. Uh, for me. Personally, the update may tell me in another language to understand these audits and. Bring us up to date. If you're five years past. And. Uh. Is is it ever a vision to catch up or be caught up at some time or another? And I would love to spend a day with understanding these. These words and these numbers that you're presenting to us.
Like I mentioned earlier, anytime you're all welcome to my office, um.
I as a group, as a group, because you won't have, we won't be going round and round saying the same thing.
No, that'd be fine. Um. And with dates and stuff, what can we use, you know, and I touched on it earlier, use the corrective action plan. That I have attached for my twenty twenty audit. There's no dates there. I mean, it's explained, it's very good in detail what's happened. Um, so. That's basically what the funding agencies always look at also is our corrective action plan. What you're doing, tribe, to fix this. Um. So on another note. It's not my audit, it's ours. We're in it together, okay? I'm trying to get us back into compliance. Um, but it takes time. I know I mentioned that many times, but yes.
Um, one one thing I want to mention on since we're all talking about uh. Uh, getting a delegation together. Um, and I know we sent this uh memo out to all the tribal council here. On June, June twelfth, twenty twenty-five. From ten to three P, three thirty PM. They'll they'll have a consultation in Vis Mart, North Dakota. So that'd be a good time to get that delegation ready for then. So I'll be expecting that. Uh, so if you're interested, let's go. That's all I have. Thank you.
Just, just one more, Chair.
Yes.
You know, Dean, if 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 anything really happens and and we're to the point where, you know, I had mentioned diabetes program is uh. Shouldn't have to shut their doors, but if they have to. I I know in six thirty-eight law self-determination, you know, direct contract support funding. Can actually be used because it does belong to the programs to keep the doors open for them, correct?
That special diabetes does not get direct contract support.
Yeah, but they receive an indirect cost that they pay, which also could be used.
They actually take their indirect cost from within the grant. It's not, say, you got your direct cost as that. Grant form says, and then they put indirect cost on there.
Yeah.
You take it from within that whatever you award it. The BIA and IHS Master Health. Contracts, they put. Um, indirect costs on top of their direct contract support. I mean, they're direct dollars, so, um. And a lot of these funding agencies, when they do that, take it from within, it's not at the tribe's IDC rate, it's at a certain limitation. Ten, fifty percent, but yeah.
So it is eligible?
If they give it, if they give them their direct contract support dollars, um.
Councilwoman Little Hawk Weston?
Yeah, one question, Dean. When you talk about the diabetes program. We were told that uh you could, we could request for a waiver. If it came to that. So could you kind of talk a little bit about that? What if case that might happen, that maybe the council needs to take some kind of action on that?
So what happened with the special diabetes way back when, whenever you received, I met with the director. I gave him a letter from the president. I said, get a hold of your grant specialists. See if they could give the tribe a waiver. On submitting our audits. Some type of, you know, waiver saying. You know, give us so much funding. Um, but, but what I said earlier, the grant specialist at the time was retired. They weren't here, none, none of it.
I'm just throwing that question out there. So tomorrow, when you do meet with them, like you said. Then maybe that's something you should ask, or do, maybe that should come back to the finance committee.
So when I get back, that's why I'm with Charlie and Chief of Staff, see what come out of there, see if their grant specialist. Made contact with them today after they met with their higher ups.
Okay, just have to ask that. Thank you.
Councilman Dylan.
Motion to approve the comptroller's report.
Okay, motion by Councilman Dylan, second by Councilman Puyer. Secretary, call for the vote.
Anna Halverson?
Yes.
David Kelly?
No.
Tyler Lunderman?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Huh.
Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
David Puyer?
Yes.
Julianne Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
No.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior?
Yes.
Lane Little Thunder?
Good.
B. Frando?
No.
James Cross? Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
No.
Jackie Sears?
Uh huh.
Um, and Donary Goldspear?
Yes.
Fifteen yes, four no, motion carried.
Thank you, tribal council. Uh, I'll see you next month.
Okay. Moving on to our next agenda item, the treasurer's office.
Good afternoon.
Um.
I. I don't have a written report of everything that I've been working on. But I did submit the general fund budget summary. And um, I have a couple of other items that. I brought as well. The resource report is emailed to you from Steph or Stacy, one of them. They emailed you the itemized report for your perusal, for you to look at. The general fund um, budget summary is the same as. It's the expenditure, I mean, the summary balances for May 1st. To today. Are there any questions regarding that? The one thing I wanted to bring to your attention on that. Is um, the Resource Office. Remember, I told you guys, we'd probably have to review it by, by June halfway through the year. Well, I think we're gonna have to review it. Because the assistance line item is, is almost depleted, just the general assistance, that's where we helped with. Utilities and everything else that wasn't related to elderly youth or veterans. Um. I think that was it for, the only thing that was out of the ordinary for that. So we'll have to review that and finance sometime soon. The, the next thing, if there's no questions on that. The next thing I have is a resolution. Um, we made a motion and Executive Board and it was passed. To appoint one of our own members to the, to the GAO Tribal Advisory Committee. So I'm gonna read you the resolution. Resolution of the Ogallalasoo Tribal Council of the Ogallalasoo Tribe to nominate Councilmember Julianne Spotted Bear. To the Government Accountability Office's Tribal Indigenous Advisory Council. Whereas the Ogallalasoo Tribe adopted its constitution and bylaws by referendum vote on December 14th, 1935, in accordance. With Section 16 of the Indian Reorganization Act of 1934 and under Article 3 of the Ogallalasoo Tribe. Constitution, the Ogallalasoo Tribal Council is the governing body of the Ogallalasoo Tribe. And whereas pursuant to the constitution and bylaws of the Ogallalasoo Tribe, the Ogallalasoo Tribal Council exercises legislative powers to enact and promulgate resolutions and ordinances. And whereas. Article 4, Sections 1F, 1K, 1M. And 1W empower the Tribal Council to manage the economic affairs of the tribe, protect and preserve. The property of the tribe, adopt laws governing the conduct of the persons on the Pinage Indian Reservation and adopt laws protecting and promoting. The health and general welfare of the Ogallalasoo Tribe and its membership. And whereas the United States Government Accountability Office, GAO. Announced that it was seeking requests for nomination for tribal leaders to serve on the GAO's Tribal and Indigenous Advisory Council. And whereas by motion 25-79XB, the OST Executive Committee nominated Tribal Councilmember Julianne Spotted Bear. To serve on the Tribal Council, on the Tribal and Indigenous Advisory Council. Whereas the members of the Tribal and Indigenous Advisory Council will advise the Government Accountability Office on vital. And emerging issues affecting tribes and their citizens and informs GAO's strategic goals. And priorities with respect to the agency's work related to such issues. And whereas the Tribal Council has determined that it is essential for the Tribal. And Indigenous Advisory Council to have representation. From large land-based tribes and from tribes from the Great Plains region to ensure. That the needs of Great Plains tribes are met and their issues adequately addressed. Whereas Tribal Councilmember Julianne Spotted Bear. Has the skills and experience necessary to be a powerful advocate for the Ogallalasoo Tribe. Great Plains Region Tribes for large and land-based tribes. And for Indian country in general, because the Tribal Councilmember Julianne Spotted Bear served over two decades in the United States Army. Where she, among other things, oversaw the operation of a multimillion dollar telecommunications equipment and coordinated with telecommunications companies. To provide communications to high-level dignitaries such as the United States President and his staff. And has played an instrumental role on the Tribal Council, including by. Co-founding the Ogallalasoo Tribe's Resource Office. With Treasurer Cora Whitehorse, which streamlined financial assistance opportunities. For Ogallalasoo Tribe members as well as provided members with critical professional development opportunities. And whereas the Tribal Council has determined that the Tribal Councilmember Julianne Spotted Bear will be. A great representative for the GAO's Tribal and Indigenous Advisory Council. Now therefore be resolved that the Ogallalasoo Tribal Council of the Ogallalasoo Tribe hereby nominate Councilmember Julianne Spotted Bear. To serve on the United States Government Accountability Office's Tribal and Indigenous Advisory Council. And I, I made this nomination and suggestion because I believe on every single stack. That every department in the United States government has, we should have an Ogallalasoo Tribal member. There are openings for Homeland Security. Health and Human Services, and what was the other one? There was three openings right now. And I believe that there should be three Ogallalasoo Tribal members on those advisory committees. Because we need to represent our tribe. We need to get our voice and our needs out there. I know that there's a lot of people who are pessimistic and say, well, they're not gonna listen anyway. They don't pay attention to what tribes say. But you know what, they do. And they ask questions. And it's a chance for our council members to get information out there. You know, this week at Treasury, when I present, when I spoke to the IRS. The Commissioner's Office. She asked a question about, um, because I said. We as Ogallalasoo Tribe should not be. Um, put in the same category as large employers. Because we are a tribal government. We are a government, period, we are not a company. We are not a part of any company. And we should not have to follow ERISA standards or the ACA. Because we have a treaty. That says that the federal government would provide healthcare services to our tribe. And all the other tribes in that treaty. And you know what, that Commissioner didn't even know we had a treaty. Didn't even know that healthcare was in our treaty. And then I had to remind her that treaties, according to their law. Are the supreme law of the land. And that's their law. And they wrote these treaties in languages that we didn't understand. So the least they could do is uphold their end. The other thing that the federal government is trying to do is to push us towards self-governance. Self-governance is not good. They play it off where, if you go self-governance, they give you all the funding, you get to make your own decisions for what's best for your people. But, when they're funding us at 13% of need for law enforcement. And 30% of need for education. And what, 20 something percent need for healthcare. Then how do we justify going self-governance? Because how are we going to supplement that funding? We can't even supplement a program to stay open. So we really need to be there and educate them that we cannot afford to go self-governance. We cannot let the federal government off the hook. They have a responsibility and they need to follow that responsibility. And it, you know, all these questions about the audits and everything. I know that we have a responsibility for reporting. That should have been the focus last year, the audits started last year. The 425s, I should have been on top of, but I wasn't. Because I signed 425s like maybe every other month, so I assumed that those were the quarterly 425s. When I went back and looked, because I keep copies of everything, when I went back and looked, these were 425s from 2019. Because they wouldn't turn them in until the audits were completed, because BIA wouldn't accept them. And now they want all of them. The last two quarters, the first two quarters of 420, of 2025 and the last two quarters of 2024. So that way we're all, you know, not, what did they call it? We're in compliance because we're not delinquent. Then we have to work backwards from there. From 2024, the second quarter of 2024 back to however far back they're missing documents. It, it really kind of annoys me because BIA, they dumped $60 million, program dollars. Into a pot in January and then freaked out and said, the tribe needs to draw all that money down. Well, you know what, that money was from 2018, 19, 20, 21, 22, and 23. None of it was current, none of it was money that, that was current, none of it. All of it should have been given to us in 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, and 23. Because those all have to be reported on those 425s. But they gave them to us late, and then what? They hold our feet to the fire. And come to council. And don't tell the whole truth. That really upsets me. But we need, back to this resolution, we need to have our own people representing our people. In Washington, at these meetings. Because they're important, we have Davy, who's on USDA. We had Tyler, who was on HUD, that's what position is open now. I think that we should have tribal members on every single position that we possibly can. And, and I know there was a comment that one of the Great Plains chairman wanted to apply. But we need to push for our tribal members to represent. Our tribal members. From the Ogallalasoo Tribe. Because we need the representation here. We have the biggest tribe in South Dakota. And we have the fifth biggest tribe in the United States. So we need to make sure that we're at the table educating those that don't know who we are. So I would like to request a motion to approve my resolution.
All right, we got questions, Councilman Kelly.
You know, I don't like being called a liar, Cora. I'm just saying that. Anyway, uh, you know, I, I agree with some of the stuff that she said whenever it comes to self-governance. You know, uh, years ago, and, and, and I'll, I'll let you guys know. Jim Cross was there whenever I, uh, I, I applied for the negotiated rulemaking in transportation. Is basically what them teams are. So whenever you go into a scenario of that caliber. Don't expect it to be just regular Joes coming off the street, you're gonna sit with a full room of attorneys. And you have to fight for anything and everything that you get. You know, when you're talking self-governance, you're completely away from self-determination. At some point within three to four-year timeframe, they expect you. To be self-sufficient and not be a ward of the government, basically. They're gonna give you that timeframe, you're gonna get your full, full funding in one lump sum. At least that's what they tell you. But I know for a fact, my friend up there in Spirit Lake, their tribe went self-governance and he's part of the transportation. He hasn't seen his money in over a year. And he's disgusted with self-governance. Boy, they sold him a pile of, just a pile. And, and his people went for it and now they're really, really hurting. So whenever it comes to sitting on these negotiated rulemaking teams, you know. I, I expect, or, or I'd tell you right now, read every little thing. And, and a must can change the whole goddamn language. So you gotta read that stuff real clear, so I agree, you know, going self-governance for this tribe would be. Not in the best interest. We are gonna get hurt in the long run. And that's what I realized when I worked on that negotiated rulemaking team. You're gonna have to fight for everything you got, and you're gonna have to learn them damn treaties by heart too. Because that's where almost all of your answers are gonna come from. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Councilman Greenwell.
I'll motion to approve Julianne Spotted Bear. To serve on the United States Government Accountability Office's Tribal and Indigenous Advisory Council.
Okay, motion by Councilman Greenwell, second by Councilman Weston. Call for the vote.
Donary Ghost Bear?
No.
Anna Halverson?
No.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hog Weston?
Huh.
Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
David Poyer?
No.
Sorry, what? No. Julianne Spotted Bear?
Abstain.
Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior?
Yes.
Lane Little Thunder?
Yes.
Beef Randall?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yes.
Craig Dillon? Troy Little?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Jackie Sears?
Yeah.
13 yes, four no, one abstain, one not voting, motion carried. Councilwoman Spalding.
I just want to say thank you to my colleagues for your vote.
Okay, thank, thank you Treasure.
I don't have anything else, so thank you. Um, we, we are planning a, um. A trip to DC the third week of June. We are setting up meetings and um. Hopefully we can all come together to have the same idea to speak about.
Who's, who's leading this effort?
Yeah, I, I really want to say something on that too. I really think that uh, you know, when we got together as council this past week. Those are some of the things that we talked about and were the ones that contacted you. We told Ryan to make sure, let the treasurer know that we are going to go to DC. And so, you know, I'm glad that we are going to go as a delegation. And I do agree, we need to work together as a tribe, along with our other sister tribes to, uh, to show them up there in DC. You know, where we stand as a tribe, you know, especially when it comes to uh, educating them about the treaty. Like you said, they didn't know we had a treaty, they didn't know that they fund HHS under our treaties. There's probably a lot of things they don't know, that's why we need to go to DC and do exactly what was said. And so, you know, I agree with that, and so we did, I think, uh, you know, Ryan was in contact with you and also. you know, Ryan was in contact with you, and also, I think President, um, I think Jennifer's also aware of it. But we do need to, um, get the agenda going. We do need to know and make sure that we have everything on the agenda for all the days that we need to knock it on those doors and talk into our delegation and others there. So I do want to say that our new council that I just got on board are, they're up for it, and they're willing to go to DC. So I just wanna say that today, and, uh, just wanna say that, uh, we do need to work together moving forward. Thank you.
Yes, yes, also, let me know ahead of time and so we can squeeze it in our, the schedule. I think we are going, we'll be in Bismarck on for, what did I say, tw- twelve? The twelfth of June?
I, I think your calendar that you sent out said you would be at NCAI during that time.
Okay, what, what, what was the date on it?
I think it's the
Third?
No, the next week.
Okay, yeah. Okay, I'll have to look again. All right. Yes, and I encourage you, please, we need to, uh, show up in numbers. It's, it's a good way to find out what's going on, on, you know, on a national level, and, and it does benefit our tribe at the local level. So I encourage you to get involved. Thank you. Thank you, Treasure. And we need a motion to
Motion to approve Treasure's report.
Okay, motion by Councilman London. Second by Councilman Standing Soldier. Ca- Secretary, call for the vote.
Donroy Goldspear?
Yes.
Anna Halverson?
Yes.
David Kelly?
No.
Tyler Lunderman?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Uh.
Bold little white man?
Yes.
David Poyer?
Yes.
Julianne Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
No.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Richard Greenwald Senior?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
Beef Randall?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yes.
Craig Dillon? Troy Little?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Jackie Sears?
Uh huh.
Seventeen yes, two no, motion carried. Councilwoman.
Thank you, Chair. Before, before the treasure goes, I just wanna, uh, give a huge thank you for uh, allowing me to go to Washington DC with you. Um, and witness, you know, the efforts that you put in speaking with the treasurer, uh, and also the deputy of the DOI, uh, DOI, and also with the IRS. And I wanna let the, the council, I know I was messaging the group chat and giving you updates, uh, in the meetings that were happening in the, during that time. But there's nothing more than sitting in that room and witnessing the efforts that were put in play wh- during the treasurer's speak. And I just wanna, you know, address that here and just say thank you for your words during that time because I let Cora know, but it was an emotional moment because she did u- utilize a lot of powerful words in that meeting. It was so much so that that room really did fall silent, um, in there. Utilizing the treaty and talking about the history and the knowledge that we were all raised with, and it was really inspiring and for the, the room to be as silent as it did and for them to listen adamantly as they did. I wanna say thank you for teaching them and for inspiring, because a lot of them did come up and thank her for what she said in there. And she did fight hard for us. So thank you, uh, Treasurer White Horse, for what you did in there on behalf of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe. I appreciate that. Um, it's unfortunate I don't get to go on the next trip to Washington DC, but I thank you for that, and thank you for fighting for the tribe, and, you know, thank you for the council for taking those efforts and going there.
Yes, when Ogallala speak in Washington, we're pretty strong, so it's, it's good that you get involved. We have a proud history. Thank, thank you. Thank you, Treasure. Okay, moving on to our next, uh, agenda item. Uh, at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to the EMD committee, the chair.
Mr. Dama asked the vice, the vice chair to read the resolutions.
Okay, I'll turn it over to the vice chair.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, first item I have on the list here is, uh, resolution of the Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe to approve a transfer of federal funds in the amount of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to the state of South Dakota for the Ogallala Sioux air, airport pavement maintenance transfer. And I'm going to skip the first three whereas to the fourth. Whereas on May ninth, twenty twenty five, the Economic and Business Development Committee recommended that the Tribal Council approve a transfer to the state of South Dakota of federal funds appropriated to the tribe for the Ogallala Sioux Airport for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, fiscal year twenty twenty-three, and fiscal year twenty twenty-four. In a total combined amount of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the Ogallala Sioux Tribe Airport Pavement Maintenance Project. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council hereby approves and duly authorizes the transfer to the state of South Dakota of federal funds appropriated to the tribe for the Ogallala Sioux Airport for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, fiscal year twenty twenty-three, and fiscal year twenty twenty-four in the total combined amount of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the Ogallala Sioux Tribe, uh, Ogallala Sioux Airport Pavement Maintenance Project. And the Tribal Council declares that these funds represent the tribe's federal share of the project. And be it further resolved that the Tribal Council hereby authorizes and directs the tribal president to execute FAA Form five one zero zero dash one one zero request for FAA approval of agreement for transfer of entitlements and the certification of transferring sponsor as the duly authorized official of the tribe. And be it further resolved that the Tribal Council authorizes an attorney for the tribe to sign the certificate of transferring sponsors attorney. And the Tribal Council declares that the exa- execution of FAA Form five one zero zero dash one one zero request for FAA approval of agreement for transfer of entitlements to effectuate the transfer to the state of South Dakota of federal funds appropriated to the tribe for the Ogallala Sioux Tribal air, airport for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, fiscal year twenty twenty-three, and fiscal year twenty twenty-four in the total combined amount of two hundred and seventy-five thousand for the Ogallala Sioux Airport Pavement Maintenance Project. It is in all respects due and proper, and in accordance with the laws of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe. Certification. Motion.
Motion by Councilman Rosales, second by Councilman Standing Soldier. Question? Go ahead. Uh, Councilman Kelly.
You know, I, I don't wanna object to anything that's gonna happen to our airport, but I do have a question. You know, uh, years ago, I used to take care of that airport, and we were one of the few tribes in the very beginning that received an allocation from the FAA. And that allocation was about three hundred thousand. And what we used to do is would save that three hundred, three hundred, another three hundred until we can get a major project going on the runway, whether it be pavement, uh, preservation, or replacing the lights, or striping, or something like that. And in this case, the, the resolution is stating it's saving three years' worth of funding for two hundred and seventy-five thousand? That, that, that should be close to nine hundred thousand if I'm thinking correct. So I, I just wanna put that out there on the record. Not, not unless it's our local match. You know, we're also required to provide a local match, but in this case, I don't think it'd even come up to two hundred and seventy-five. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Secretary, call for the vote.
Donroy Goldspear?
Yes.
Anna Halverson?
Yes.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Uh.
Bold little white man?
Yes.
David Poyer?
Yes.
Julianne Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Richard Greenwald Senior?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
Beef Randall?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Jackie Sears?
Uh huh.
Nineteen unanimous motion carried.
Thank you, Council. Uh, second item I have here is solution of, of the Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe to create Casino Task Force for Prairie Wind Casino and East Wind Casino. Once again, I'm going to skip the first three whereas. Um, we go to the fourth. Whereas Article Four, Section One, the Ogallala Sioux Tribe authorizes the Tribal Council the power to delegate, to delegate the subordinate boards and offices. Any of the enumerated powers in Article Four, Section One, reserving the right to review any action taken by virtue of such delegated power. And whereas the Economic and Business Development Committee of the Tribal Council is the Oversight Committee for Prairie Wind Casino and East Wind Casino. And whereas on May sixteen, twenty twenty-five, the Economic and Business Development Committee recommended that the Tribal Council create Casino Task Force for Prairie Wind Casino and East Wind Casino. And that its members include James Cross, Garfield Still, Ronald Beef Randall, Donroy Cubby Goldspear, Lyle Weston, and George Dreamer Junior. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council hereby establishes a Casino Task Force for Prairie Wind Casino and East Wind Casino. And its members shall include James Cross, Garfield Still, Ronald Beef Randall, Donroy Cubby Goldspear, Lyle Weston, and George Dreamer Junior. Certification, motion.
Motion by Councilman Rosales. Second by Councilwoman Sears. Oh, you had a question? Okay, go ahead.
Well, I'll second that, too, but, um, I think, um, the, the concern that I have is, um, is this strictly just for the council, or can anybody, you know, I'm getting kind of some, uh, questions on that. Is how, um, somebody else can get on to kinda help? Can we put some kind of language that the task force can include anybody that has skills and any, um, uh, something to offer to help build up the casinos? Can we put some kind of language in it? Lawyer, lawyer? Yeah, because I hate to just have it closed and it's just them. Yeah. So I'll second that motion.
Okay. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Yeah, I also was getting the same information. People wanna help out uh, in giving their input into, uh, getting on the task force, but they might not be the, um, Tribal Council, but might be some people that have that expertise in helping. So maybe the attorney could add another, um, another therefore get resolved or something in there to, or ordained to add other, you know, people with that expertise in casino background or whatever to sit on the task force. And maybe they could meet with the task force and maybe I don't know if we wanna have them meet with the task force or come back to law and order. But I think maybe that's something that, uh, it should be put in the the resolution, Jeremy.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I think that would be a good addition to the resolution as well.
Um, I can add it. I'll just add, um, I don't, I don't have the word version. I'll get that from the EBD attorney, but uh, I'll just add that, um, therefore another whereas to include the, uh, to allow the inclusion of individuals with expertise who have, who would like to serve on the task force.
Okay. Secretary, call for the vote.
Donroy Goldspear? Anna Halverson?
Yes.
David Kelly?
No.
Tyler Lunderman?
With amendments, no.
What? No, sorry. Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Uh.
Bold little white man?
No.
David Poyer?
No.
Julianne Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
Not voting.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Richard Greenwald Senior?
No.
Yes.
Beef Randall?
Yeah.
James Cross?
No.
No.
Craig Dillon?
No.
Troy Little?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Out voting.
Jackie Sears?
Uh huh.
Nine yes, seven no, three not voting. Motion carried.
And that's it for EMD. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to our next agenda item, Education Committee, and I'll turn it over to the chair. Mr. Randall? Beef Randall?
Yeah. We could wait for Ryan if he wanted to, this vote, yes. See, and now Ryan likes to read this stuff here. Okay, we got one here, um, resolution of the Tribal Council of Ogallala Sioux Tribe rescinding the resolution number twenty dash one eighty-four and authorizing the use of option two for the construction of the Wounded Knee District School K twelve project. Going down to number four, whereas whereas the Ogallala Sioux Tribe is committed to providing quality education to its children and ensure ensuing access to modern and safe educational facilities. And whereas the Wounded Knee District School Board operating under Fred Public Law one hundred dash two ninety-seven is responsible for the administration and operation of schools serving the children of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe in the Wounded Knee District. And whereas the Education Committee at the regular meeting held on October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty approved a school construction project for the Wounded Knee District School to replace existing facilities to better serve the needs of its students of community. K twelve project. And whereas the Education Committee recommended that it be referred to the land committee meeting on October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty and then forward to the Tribal Council for action and approve and approval as a two-thirds agenda item at their October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty regular meeting. And whereas the Education Committee reviewed the various options for completing the planning and design bill, RFP, development project of the Wounded Knee School and agreed upon option one, funds to come from PL one hundred two ninety-seven grant. And whereas the decision to choose option one was reviewed, finalized, and approved at the Education Committee at a regular meeting held on October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty. And the committee recommended that it be referred to the Tribal Council for action and approval as a two-thirds agenda by, at their October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty regular meeting. And whereas in October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty, the Tribal Council of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe adopt a resolution number twenty dash one eighty-four, therein approve an option one to the use of funds from PL one hundred dash two ninety-seven grant to build the K twelve project. And to not accept ownership of the school buildings. And whereas the Wounded Knee District School Board has determined that considering the looming tariffs, budgets cuts, and departmental reorganizations which have been imposed by the Trump administration proc- proceeding under option two, using the provision of the public law proceeding under Option Two, using the provision of the public law ninety-three dash six thirty-eight as amended for the construction of the K twelve project. Will ensure funding would be available to complete the project. And whereas the Wounded Knee District School Board acknowledges the Department of Facilities Management and Construction, D F M C, and the Bureau of Indian Education Duty Responsibility provide technical assistance, whether directly or by third party, at their own cost. To ensure the successful completion of the construction project. And whereas public law ninety-three six thirty-eight does not require tribes, tribal organizations, the Wounded Knee District School Board, to establish an escrow account for management of federal construction funds. And whereas the Wounded Knee District School Board has determined that it is in its best interest to utilize the provisions of twenty-five U C USC uh, fifty-three ten for investment of said federal funds. Where such investment will permit the school board to earn interest. Interest income for use toward the construction project and necessary administrative expenses of the school board. And whereas the Tribal Council at the Ogallasoo Tribe requires that the Bureau of Indian Affairs, Bureau of Indian Affairs, D F M C, to release said construction funds in lump sum to the Wounded Knee District School Board. And whereas the Ogallasoo Tribe requires assurances that the Bureau of Indian Education, D F M C, and the Bureau of Indian Affairs shall not impose conditions of an escrow agreement on the Wounded Knee School, Wounded Knee District School Board. And now therefore be it resolved that the Ogallasoo Tribal Council hereby authorizes the Wounded Knee District School Board and its leadership to apply for receive and enter into a contract or grant agreement for construction of the new or replacement facilities of the Wounded Knee District School Facilities under PL ninety-three six thirty-eight support subpart J. Be it further resolved that the Ogallasoo Tribe Tribal Council directs that such grant contract shall not contain a provision requiring that the Wounded Knee District School Board enter in enter in an escrow agreement with the B I E or D F M C for management of the management of construction funds. Be it further resolved that the Ogallasoo Tribal Council directs that such federal construction funds be awarded and released in full lump sum basis to the Wounded Knee District District School Board as provided under PL ninety-three dash six thirty-eight. Be it further resolved that the Ogallasoo Tribal Council supports the Wounded Knee District School Board's assertion of its right to manage and administer the construction contract and directs the D F M C and B I E to acknowledge and fulfill their duty and responsibility to the to provide technical assistance, whether directly or third party, at their own cost to ensure ensure the successful completion of the construction project. Be it further resolved that O S D Resolution Number Twenty dash one eighty-four adopted on October twenty-seven, twenty twenty is hereby rescinded. Be it finally resolved that the Ogallasoo Tribal Council directs the Bureau of Indian Education to immediately transfer all funds associated with this construction project to the Wounded Knee District School Board and authorizes the appropriate tribal officials to take uh, such action as are necessary to assist the school board in implementing the intent and purpose of this resolution. Certification motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Randall, second by Councilman Kelly. Secretary, call for the vote.
Donary Goldsberg?
Yes.
Anna Halverson?
Yes.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Tyler Londonman?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston? Bold little white man? David Poyer? Julianne Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Richard Greenwald Senior?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yeah.
Beef Randall?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yes.
Craig Dillon? Troy Little?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Jackie Sears?
Uh huh.
Eighteen yes, one not voting, motion carried. Go ahead, Councilman. Go ahead, Beef.
Got one more. Resolution of the Ogallasoo Tribal Council of the Ogallasoo Tribe authorizing the Ogallasoo Tribe's Tribal Education Director to request a meeting with South Dakota Governor Roden. Down to the fourth. Whereas the Ogallasoo Tribal Council has appointed a Tribal Education Director, T E D, to serve as primary education authority and lays down on behalf of the nation in all education related matters. And whereas the T E D works to support and advocate the native students across a variety of educational settings, including tribal, public, Bureau of Indian Education, B I E, private charter, and faith-based schools. And whereas the T E Ds from the nine federally recognized tribe tribal nations that share geography with South Dakota have ident identified a collective need to meet with Governor Larry Roden and the Secretary of Tribal Relations, Algen Young. And whereas the purpose of this meeting is to reestablish communication, promote meaningful consultation, and collaboratively advance educational priorities such as student achievement, educated educated development, culturally relevant curriculum, and respectful data sharing. And whereas partnerships between tribal nations and the state of South Dakota, particularly in education, are essential to honoring treaty and trust responsibilities and improving outcomes for native students. Whereas the Ogallas O S D Education Committee has re-reviewed the matter and recommends the approval of this authorization by the Tribal Council for the purpose stated herein and now therefore therefore be it resolved that the Ogallasoo Tribal Council hereby authorizes the then authorizes Dana Bravie, or Tribal Education Director, to formally seek and participate in a meeting with Governor Roden and state leadership on on a date mutually agreed to. In alignment with the collective effort of South Dakota Tribal Education Directors and be it further resolved that this authorization affirms the Ogallasoo Tribe's commitment to intergovernmental dialogue and that respects tribal sovereignty and promotes the shared goal of educational equity for native students. Certification motion.
Okay, motion by Councilman Randall. Second by Councilman Rosales. Call for the vote.
Donary Goldsberg? Anna Halverson?
Yes.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Tyler Londonman?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Uh.
Bold little white man? David Poyer?
Yes.
Julianne Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Richard Greenwald Senior?
Yes.
Yeah.
Beef Randall?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yes.
Craig Dillon? Troy Little?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Jackie Sears?
Uh huh.
Nineteen unanimous motion carried.
I did, thank.
Thank you, Councilman. Okay, moving on to the next agenda item, Finance Committee, and I'll turn it over to the Chair.
Uh, the Chairman of Finance is isn't able to be here today, but I am the Vice Chairman, so.
Okay.
Um, we have uh, two items for Finance Committee. I'm gonna ask if uh, one of the Secretaries could read both.
Okay.
Resolution of the Ogallasoo Tribal Council of the Ogallasoo Tribe to recontract PDA AL ninety-three dash six thirty-eight programs with the Bureau of Indian Affairs at one hundred percent levels of funding and request end of year funding. I'm gonna skip over the sovereignty clauses. Whereas the Finance Committee is a standing committee of the Ogallasoo Tribal Council and has been delegated the power to oversee all budgetary and financial matters on behalf of the Ogallasoo Tribal Council. And whereas the Ogallasoo Tribe wants to continue all tribal programs currently contracted under PDA AL ninety-three dot sixty-eight thirty thirty eight ninety-three dash six thirty-eight from the Bureau of Indian Affairs. And whereas the term of the PDA AL ninety-three dash six thirty-eight contracts are specified list of programs is attached here in the contracts. And whereas the Ogallasoo Tribe would benefit from the from end of year funding available from the B I A. And whereas the O S T Finance Committee has reviewed the recontracting resolution and recommends approval by Ogallasoo Tribe Council now. Therefore be it resolved that the Ogallasoo Tribal Council does hereby approve submitting promote proposals to recontract PDA AL ninety-three dash six thirty-eight programs with the Bureau of Indian Affairs at one hundred percent level of funding by June twenty twenty-five and to request available end of year funding. And be it further resolved that the President or in his absence, the Vice President and the Treasurer are authorized to take such action necessary to effectuate this resolution. Certification.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Londonman.
Second.
Second by Councilman Randall, Councilwoman Little Hawk Weston.
Chair, all the mics are on. I don't know what's going on, but.
Yeah, mine kind of went haywire too.
Where's Ed?
All the mics lit up.
Then they went off.
Yeah, go ahead, uh, Councilwoman Poyer.
Check. Is Superintendent here? The reason I asked, you know,
Yeah.
I know we need a recontract and ask for year-end funds. At the Land Committee meeting, we asked they have the they froze positions in the B I A. And there's twenty-three vacant positions at the B I A, our agency. So if them unfilled, are we eligible for those funds that are sitting there that they're not gonna fail? Cause it that that's my question because they're not using them, so it would be year-end funds of the Bureau. That's you know, that could be put into our six thirty-eight programs. Thought I seen the Superintendent Superintendent here once. I was asking.
Well, she's scheduled to be here, so we'll see. She'll probably come.
That's why we'll go on June twelfth at the consultation this mark. B I A.
You're going to Prairie Nights, huh?
Motion on the floor, check.
Yes, uh. Who seconded that? Okay, and and Randall, yeah. Secretary, call for the vote.
Donary Goldsberg?
Yes.
Anna Halverson?
Yes.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Tyler Londonman?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Uh.
Bold little white man? David Poyer?
Yes.
Julianne Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Richard Greenwald Senior? Blaine Little Thunder?
Yeah.
Beef Randall?
Yes.
James Cross? Craig Dillon? Troy Little?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yeah, yes.
Jackie Sears?
Uh huh.
Nineteen unanimous motion carried.
Next one.
Go ahead.
Like to ask our secretary to read that as well.
Resolution of the Ogallasoo Tribal Council of the Ogallasoo Tribe to restart payments to Bowie for costs from the summer food program. Skipping the sovereignty clause. Whereas G F Bowie's Foods invoice number ninety-nine nine four two four, build the tribe nine thousand seven hundred and eighty-three. Did I say that number? Nine hundred? Oh, nine hundred, nine hundred and seventy thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars for costs associated with providing meals for the O S T summer food nutrition programs. And whereas the Ogallasoo Tribe initially initially made a payment of two hundred and three thousand eight hundred and seventy-four dollars and thirty cents towards that debt. And whereas concerns regarding the documentation submitted in support of the invoice was raised at a special session of the O S T Council on February twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five and pursuant to motion number twenty-five dash eighty-two. The payments to Bowie were suspended until additional information was provided by R F Bowie regarding the charges related to the O S T summer food nutrition program. And whereas in the meantime, R F Bowie withheld his lease payments for the use of the stored premises in the months of February, March, and April twenty twenty-five for a total of a hundred and fifty-seven thousand five hundred dollars and per month. And whereas R F Bowie provided additional documentation to the Finance Committee on May eighth, twenty twenty-five, and the Finance Committee revealed and referred Bowie's repayment plan to the full council for approval. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ogallasoo Tribal Council of the Ogallasoo Tribe approves reinitiating payments to G F Bowie Foods, deducting any money withheld by R F Bowie from his lease payments for the stored property. And be it further reserved that the resolved that the President or in his absent the absent, the Vice President and the Treasurer are authorized to take such action necessary to effectuate this resolution. Certification.
Motion? Oh, question? Go ahead.
Well, where's the money coming from?
Where's the treasurer? She, yeah, she's the one that said there.
Um, I'm pretty sure this was discussed in finance, right? Was that in the discussion of where the money's gonna come from?
Is it on in in the minutes? I know uh, we did have treasure in there. Maybe you can call her. We get the treasure on the line?
We get the treasure on the line?
Go ahead, Councilman Weston.
So I also have a question on this, and it's just general math. Um, where it states that Bowie went, withheld his lease payments. So he hasn't made three payments to us for his lease. Is that going to be deducted from the amount that we owe him? That's my question.
Could we hear from him? Vice Chair?
Mr. Bowie?
Yes, is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, well. We wanna come to a mic in the.
So if I understood the question correctly, the question was, was the lease payments that were deducted gonna come off the agreement? Is that? Okay, in, in the agreement that Cora and I originally had signed. Uh, the lease payments for February, March. April and May would not be made and then at that time, payments of.
So it says here, February, March and April.
Yep, and so the entire, that was as of that time, but now that May is up. May would have been deducted, May was owed, May twenty-fifth. And so three, three payments would be remaining of two hundred and three thousand eight hundred and seventy-four dollars and thirty cents. Times three.
Chair? Was there a payment plan attached to this or?
I didn't see it. Pretty close, I've, I've got a copy of the agreement here. Is there a way where you could get that to us, or is anybody able to get Cora on the line? President? Yeah, oh, sorry. So each, each of those months for February, March, April and May. Fifty-two thousand five hundred dollars would have been withheld. So we're all the way up to May, so whatever fifty-two thousand five hundred dollars times four. Has been withheld. Okay, so then it would be whatever. Two hundred and three thousand eight hundred and seventy-four dollars and thirty cents times three, whatever that is, I think it's. Two oh. Two oh three, eight seventy-four, thirty. So that's what would be left, is the balance of that, because it would have been, had, had the tribe continued, it would have been paid today. I'd be glad to send this agreement to whoever needs to see it.
Question?
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
I did get a text from the treasurer and she said the payment will come out of the general fund. So. Just letting the council know, just what Cora said.
Did, is she okay with, is she okay to move forward?
All she said was that the payment would come out of the general fund. So. And it was discussed in Finance Committee, the minutes are attached in there. There was a motion and a second to forward it to the Tribal Council, that's where it is today. So. Should try to resolve it.
Or Councilman Weston?
So, um, this resolution here is inaccurate because of the. The payments, um. For the lease weren't being, weren't being paid either, so we have to offset that balance for, from what we owe him. It's two hundred and, um. Two hundred and ten thousand one hundred for the lease payments that he hasn't made yet. Which he owes the O S T Tribe. And then we owe him those that are listed on that agreement, the two hundred and three thousand. Eight seventy-four thirty.
Okay, question, go ahead, Councilwoman.
Yeah, the treasurer, I did ask her. The question that was just brought up about us, about her approving us to pay this, she said, yeah. She's okay with it, it's up to us. And I think that language Lyle is talking about maybe could be, um. Based on that resolution, could maybe language we put in there, Rayanne? Touching on that part of what he owes and what we owe. She said she was trying to get on Zoom, but it's invalid.
Okay. Councilman Greenwall?
So Chair, if we could have our attorney and. Our secretary right there and maybe one of you on finance, if you wanna. Tally them numbers up, get them numbers up to the front here. Uh, that what we owed minus the three months that he owed for. The lease payment and then get that exact number and. He agrees with that number and we agree with that number, we could move forward with that. Motion.
I'll second that.
And motion by Councilman Greenwall, second by Councilwoman Little Hawk Weston. Secretary, call for the vote.
Chair?
Yes.
Did you wanna take a break while they kinda figure that out and then?
Yeah, let them get the numbers and let's.
Alright, we'll tally up the numbers, then we'll run the vote.
Okay.
Okay, take, take five, ten minute break. Okay, in the meantime, while they're.